Anything to be?
I have a people one point two.
Not in special. Is that your only question?
I meant to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything?
No.
Um, I'm gonna pull one point one. Anybody from the audience who would like to pull?
The second item. It is the pull, okay, thank you very much.
So both items are pulled? So we will forego any pulls? All right. One point one. Pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.40. Point zero seven ratified the public health officer's proclamation and confirmed the existence of a local health emergency in Trinity County due to hazards and healthy debris due to car fire. My question is a little bit of a stretch. Does this help us in any way getting FEMA help for individuals?
It would not help with FEMA. It is what we want to help and the assistance with the debris removal through the state Cal VES Cal Recycle Program. The FEMA is a little bit more challenging because of they really determine on the amount of damage how many homes were destroyed. We do not make that criteria.
So that's a done deal, we will never, okay, so that's over. All right. That was my only question.
Yeah, I am aware of, you know, we are part of a continuum of care which is supports Trinity, Kaluza, and Glen County. And there is some funding there that we could reach out to the property owners to see in different areas of how we can assist them. So we are starting a case management for them to see what things in particular they might need assistance with.
Okay. Do you have your own question?
Well, it seems this FEMA designation would help those who lost their homes who didn't have insurance. I think they're entitled to around thirty thousand dollars. So even though we're not, we are considered part of the car fire and they are receiving it, we still...
We have been in contact with the state trying to really emphasize that point.
Mm-hmm.
But they are really distinguishing the different counties.
Wow.
We were even hoping that they could even fold in the debris removal because it was part of the car fire. But it was challenging. So this was our avenue that we felt would be the best to at least pursue that debris removal through Cal Recycle is what they recommended. Even though it's, you know, they, you know, it's five homes, but to us it's five homes. And it doesn't matter if it's twenty.
Right, right.
It's the principle that we have families affected and we want to help them. So unfortunately it's been a challenge.
Thank you.
Bobby?
Yes, I, I think this is a request from you, Chair. If we could, after this, this made a motion and locally passed, if we could line it up with the regular other emergencies? Just so it's on the same agenda item every thirteen years.
Okay.
Okay. Just one thing I really wanted to ask the board is when you have opportunities to speak to legislators, one of the shortcomings of the Stafford Act is that the Stafford Act does not follow the footprint of the disaster, but more follows the boundaries of the area that it affects. I've seen this before where the Duke Fire and Rim Fire over in Muderlo, like Cal Bears County burned up a little bit, Twongley and Amidole burned. They do everything, Cal Bears County, but these two other counties out. Same thing, only a few houses there, but the disaster isn't any less painful to those people. It's still the same. It goes across that boundary, it shouldn't affect us, but unfortunately, the way the Stafford Act is written right now, it's been complained about many times.
I would like to also add, between Rick and I, we both have reached out to Senator McGuire's office just to convey to him the challenges that we've been having. And if there's any influence he could have in having them reevaluate our request. But we have not heard anything, at least I haven't. So I'm hoping there could be something there, but at this point, you know, we have to just look forward to what we have available to us.
Any questions from the public?
You're for the Weaverville, probably doesn't change the dynamics, but should be aware that the hospital did experience some additional costs because of the power outages during the disaster. So if that adds to anybody's mix someplace.
Diane Richards from Hayfork. One of the things I'd like to see is some type of resolution or statement or communication with the legislature on the impact that the smoke has. It's far greater compared to car pollution, for instance, or even our power plants. This is many, many times worse than any other pollution that we experience, including especially when it burns down housing. That's a very toxic. And so I'd like us to address that because that also goes to show how important reducing our fuel loads and getting a handle on these fires in prevention. The other thing is that we're not just suffering from the car fire smoke. It's coming up from all areas. It depends which way the wind is blowing. I mean, right now, the Mendocino complex in Hayfork, I mean, we're breathing that depending on which way the wind is blowing. So we're not just under the car fire. That's not just what this smoke is. Hertz fire, you name it, it depends where the wind's blowing. So it's not just the car fire, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve one dot one as presented.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay.
Superintendent Chadwick?
Aye.
Superintendent Beverly?
Yes.
Superintendent Morris?
Yes.
Superintendent Martin?
Aye.
Aye. All right, onto item one point two. Approve an agreement with Ascent Environmental LLC prepared the appropriate environmental document cannabis cultivation and associated activities that occur in compliance with ordinance three one five eight two three regulations subject to routing and form two hundred nine thousand five hundred fifteen from the cannabis cultivation fund.
So sure, you, I can let Rick go first and then my question.
I believe there's a change in the backup.
Yeah, unfortunately, sometimes a notice, if you don't hit save enough times, don't get changed, it don't end up with you. In the departmental recommendations, you'll notice that the first paragraph doesn't match the second paragraph. What I was asking for was I was asking for the board today to take action to approve the contract up to two hundred nine thousand five hundred fifteen. And that what I was trying to state was that the board, or support was that the staff would initiate the first phase, which was seventy thousand eight hundred fifty five until such time that the environmental document was determined. And then they wanted to roll into the next phase. So we were asking for full approval, but I was advising you that I'd be working on it as two phase, as a two-phase project. And I'd advise you in board reports at the time it comes.
That leads into my question.
Okay.
I'm glad we broke it out in phase one and phase two, Rick. So will the board get a report after phase one is completed?
Yes, we, we will have the initial study and I'll pass that initial study on to the board. It's a, it's a couple pages that shows the considerations that gave to each one. And I'll identify the ones that were, if we go to mitigating negative deck, we'll show anything was, we were gonna be able to do it to less insignificant. If it's more than significant, that'll be environmental document.
So with that, I have a couple, I didn't see in the backup. I know they talk about tiering, which they can look at with the work we have done so far in tiering to the state P E I R. The other item I want them to put into their equation that I don't see unless I missed it, missing is the, in the P E I R, they talk about the addendum process. And that needs to be figured in the evaluation on how much work they need to do in addition to the tiering. So the other option also with the P I, P E I R is like no work needed. Well, of course, that's not applicable to our situation, but they do need to factor in the addendum process along with the tiering and whether that would determine how far we need to go in the neg deck from the work we've already done and what we need to move forward to. So I don't know if that's in there, I didn't see it, but I really need that to be in part of the evaluation.
It's incorporated and have further discussion.
Okay. That's it. Yeah, I have some generally questions and then I have a few specifically, but I, I'd like to have an understanding of the whole process. And in that, I would like to understand why we're having a special meeting. This is a topic of real importance. I have requested it multiple times. I have had conversations and I know at the park, the neg deck back in November or last fall at the planning commission, and I've asked for presentations. And I have been contacted by several people throughout the county that did not even know until they heard to the grapevine was happening. So is there a time crunch that there's a reason why we have to have it today? And what the whole process is, what does it mean for the county to have a CEQA compared to the cultivators? Is there a difference? So I think we need a full understanding of that.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna give you a very much abbreviated version of it, but I'm gonna give it to you as kind of the way I see it. In, in CEQA and NEPA, we have the National Environmental Document, but that doesn't apply to projects unless they're national level. Like if you're building a state highway with federal dollars, that's when NEPA comes in. So we hear those terms both commonly, but in this case, this is a California, California only issue. So it's only CEQA that we're concerned about, which is California Environmental Quality Act. In that, when you have a, when you start out, you look at something and there's eighteen or nineteen things that you have to check off your list as to what the impacts are of those particular issues. And either they're, either they're non-issue at all, or they're a little bit of an issue, or they're issues that are significant but mitigated back to not being significant, or they're significant and cannot be mitigated. If you go through the checklist and everything is, is can be mitigated back to not significant or not impact, then you can write or prepare what's called a mitigated negative deck. It's important to know that all the studies and all that go into the first phase, where you try to have everything in the first phase to answer all your environmental questions. But in the second phase, it's just preparing the right document. If it says that your impacts are more than significant, then you have to go through what's called the E I R process. And you have to identify overriding consideration for what is happening on that particular project, essentially saying that, yes, we know that that's a problem, but this is why we believe that it's acceptable and this is how it's gonna be dealt with and possible mitigations that we might have. So really, what you're doing is you're doing all the assessments and everything in phase one. And in phase two, it's the public process, how, whether you go through an abbreviated process or a much longer, more in-depth process. Now, in that much more long in-depth process, other things could be identified that might be studied and that'd be dealt with accordingly during that time. But this is where we at least get the thing, the ball rolling to do the initial assessment and then do the assessment for each one of them. We here in Trinity, in this particular documents, looking at it from a county global standpoint, tearing off, we tried to tear off as much as we can off of what the state does and what the state says, so that we can have more abbreviated document. It deals with county issues. Now, it, does it cover all private landowners or all private cultivators? No, it doesn't, because there might be situations and they would be specific to that parcel where, say, it's known that where they're gonna cultivate is on a Native American gathering area. And that might need a cultural assessment to determine what the specific, specific issues are for that specific project. But with the E I, with the CEQA being done, our hope is is that it'll cover all the other items so that they don't have to go and look at individually. They can just look at that one thing. So does it go to everybody? Yes, it does, but no, it doesn't. It's not absolutely specific to that, but we try to use as much as what we did before to build on that individual property. So we're, we, the county is building on what the state did, and so a property owner, if they have an issue, might have to build on what the county did. So that, that's kind of the best way to explain it. On time, the time was we had, we had finished the assessment, we have a July first deadline, and we had an opportunity to get the ball rolling. The work, what all this does is just initiate the work, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done before that. So if I could give the contractor a little bit more time, that's what I was trying to do. So it's just, we had an opportunity here, I just grabbed it, so let's, let's put it on this agenda.
Don't get me wrong, I've been, I've been hoping to have the CEQA conversation, if you remember, for almost a year. And so now we have a special meeting that a lot of people in the community can't be at, and there's no public comment in the beginning. And I think that something at, at this magnitude that impacts so many people needs to be publicly noticed in a way, and I know that's not on you. I'm grateful that we're having the conversation today, I really am. The neg, the, the information you were talking about prior, that we've spent a good deal of amount of money, has never even come before the board. We never had a follow-up report on that. It was parked last November at the, or shelved, excuse me, at the planning commission. And so this is, again, a considerable amount of money that our transparency is lacking. I'd like to see an improvement. And this is not the direction of improving. So I do understand the, the process of CEQA itself and the questions and all that. I was more specifically speaking of that which has to do with our county in regards to this contract with this company. So I'm sorry I didn't make that clear, but I'll just, I'm gonna move on now. There's some specific questions. Sometimes the word or the phrase therefore the county is used in multiple different ways. So I would like to have a clearer understanding, and I could go over this with you not now, but it's used as, as people of the county and then sometimes in an administrative way. And I'd like to know if that impacts the board as far as presentations specifically to us on page three of twenty-seven or page fourteen of sixty-one. Under the determining the appropriate environmental review path, those, that resolution number two sixteen dash oh seven seven, there's, there's four bullet points there. I just wanted to say thank you for including those. I know that there's groups of people that have, I think they'd be here today if they knew about it, that have really encouraged us to have those things as part of our foundation. So I want to say thank you. On the timeline, on page four of twenty-seven or fifteen of sixty-one, that needs to be pretty much, I think, that I relooked at. I'm trying to go fast, Keith, I apologize. I really don't think there was enough time to go through. I would have asked these all offline, but I have an opportunity to. Page forty-seven of sixty-one, the analysis of the project and the utilization, utilization of Cal cannabis E I R. Is that the only documents that we're really looking at as far as our CEQA? And then the definition of the environmental baseline will be addressed with the county in early phases of the development of the environmental checklist. I would, I would like to see some, somehow these calendarized. Page forty-eight, the aesthetics. It'd be nice to know how those specific roads were determined. Later on, it says air quality and orders. And I'd like to have a better understanding of if you're, how you're gonna figure out and determine, some people like smell, some don't, if there is a standard way of understanding that. And if it's just based on number of complaints, then we don't have any information. So on page fifty-two of sixty-one, deliverables, I'd like to understand that was, and then on page fifty-three of sixty-one, task two, public mitigated negative declaration, notice of intent, intent. Is that our old one or are we doing a new one?
We're doing a new one.
Wait. Can I back draw to your question? On the, well, you just... So tell me, they're, they are going to incorporate that work we've done?
Absolutely.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, it saves a lot of, a lot of legwork. We have a lot of...
Exactly.
It really be quite candid, it forms the foundation.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if I was hearing you correctly, like it wasn't going to be, so thank you, because you're, just as you said. So we're doing the, we're incorporating the old one, but we're also doing additional?
Yeah, when, when we did the old one, there was a period that went to the planning commission and it was also had a public comment period. We received numerous comments to the document on that. And that kind of gives you, it opens the windows to what people are gonna be concerned about with the future document, with that document. And there was requests for us to do things and look at certain things. And those are the things that are gonna be addressed in this new document based on what they saw, comments from the old document.
So that's a perfect segue into my next comment. One of it says, it says that this environmental document would maintain close communication with county. And I would really be interested in knowing that part of who is the county and that about, please.
It's the county planning department.
Then I have a follow-up, Chair.
Okay.
As Rick pointed out, just as that neg deck of ours that was brought before the planning commission, it was about the same time also that the state released there. So there, there was, and a need to evaluate, and that's what this organization will do, to evaluate what we've done with the state document that will help in many ways. So there's a timing issue too that will help since they released that state document, their environmental document. So it was very much the same time, and I think Rick described the issue really well.
Yeah, and one, one thing that this is, this is, to be quite candid, this is the vehicle that puts the ball in motion to allow for the public comments to happen, being informed by certain documents and things that are reviewed. There's a huge environmental, or a huge public process ahead of us. This just puts the person behind it to make sure that everything is right and the right documents get there and the right things are available when it comes time to go through that public process.
The public and myself has been asking for this process to begin, so I get all that. You have to imagine how it feels to be notified with no notification ahead of time. This should be something that should be agendaized, that people would have... Yes, I understand.
Well, I, I, I think that the, we can have a kickoff meeting or workshop.
I think that's a good idea.
And I will work that out with the consultant to make sure that we do that. There's absolutely nothing wrong with doing that, so that would make sure we achieve what you're looking for. That is the role of the board.
Let me also be clear that the board is not allowed to interact in this process while the process is going on. And this is, we are not to influence the process in any way once the process starts. So we, our duty in this is once it goes through their review, planning, public comment, then that's after the document is completed is when we have input into the document. So we're not to manipulate this, and this is why...
That's made from the document.
But this is why the other document stopped, or we never saw the, nobody on the board ever saw the document because it didn't get to the point where we were able to see it. And this is just the beginning of the public process and I for one also had asked for this to start about March. And we are now, it's gonna have to run quickly and efficiently to be completed by the deadline date that you will complete it by if we sign this forward, so. And you did have another question I caught that I don't think I answered, sort of. So the state document, we made sure that the state document was put in there because the state document has the majority of the information that we tear off on, that we won't, we won't have to reinvent the wheel. But other information such as our previous neg deck work and other things are also available to get, gather information. So with that, I'll open up to the public.
Everett Harvey, Weaverville. I'm looking for some clarification. Are you saying that board members can't attend planning meetings just as an observer? Because there's a lot of information in meetings you can get without necessarily being there as a participant. But missing out on that information seems to me like a loss. So I need some clarify, would like some clarification there.
Do we have Margaret on the line?
I'm on the line, so I just, I couldn't, I have a question.
The question is, should board members go to planning meetings during this participation of the, of the environmental document?
No, you should not.
Okay.
You can't, I'll put it this way, you can't attend the meeting, but you should not participate in the process because you should have more participation in the process to be when it comes to, for the board of supervisors and open sessions so the public can know how you are making your determinations and obtaining the information that you are making decisions on all at the same time and gathered now together. So you shouldn't be participating in the planning commission meetings.
And anything you would hear if you were just listening would have to be disclosed to the rest of the board members?
You would want to disclose it, yes.
All right, any other public comment? Any other public comment?
I kind of think that maybe the county administrative officer, and maybe county council needs a refresh of course on the Brown Act, because I think this was posted less than 24 hours ago. Hardly anybody has a chance to see what's going on here. I don't understand why it's a special session. If the deadline is next year, July 1st, you could have waited to post it appropriately. And the backup, since it's about a contract, that there were several companies that applied for it and wanted to, I don't know what that is, but anyway. Okay.
That's a talk on the phone.
Oh. Okay. So anyways, we don't have anything in the backup about the other companies that applied, and who is Ascent? I'm not saying they could be the greatest, most wonderful environmental analysis company in the world, but who are they? So generally, when we do contracts, you want to have competitive and see what are the competitive bids and who are they? Who are these people? I think it's very important to ask that question, and it's not there. When it comes down to EIRs or assessments, let me tell you something. If you do it wrong, if you do not cooperate or collaborate with the people, the environmental concerns that exist in this county, which we are the most environmentally litigated county in California, maybe United States. So if we don't do this properly and bring everybody in early on, you don't have to just wait for public comment. I think that's actually after the horse is already out of the barn. You're going to get litigated, and it will grind everything to the stop, to a stop, on the permitting process, et cetera. All they got to do is file in court, you're done, we're done, in moving this forward. So I say, let's cooperate and collaborate, just like we do in the Trinity Collaborative, ahead of time, so we make sure all concerns are there and addressed immediately, first thing, not after, with the comments, because then all they do is they just address the comments. Well, that doesn't matter, or that does matter, and we're addressing that. Why don't you get it in early on, so that we're not litigated? If you get these people to have a seat at the table, maybe we can not be litigated. This is very serious. In fact, I believe Humboldt is being litigated right now on their EIR. You have to have every T crossed, every I dotted, to not get litigated, and the way to do that is with their absolute cooperation, collaboration with all the entities. And we have people even outside this county that will litigate. So if we can bring everybody in, perhaps we can address these concerns and problems before we get litigated. Thank you.
Dwayne Little, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Watershed Enforcement Team. I applaud the board for embracing the CEQA issue. It's long overdue, but I'm glad that you're finally embracing it. The success of your program boils down to what I feel is three basic items. Messaging, process, which you've already addressed to some extent, and enforcement. Last year, in the year, last year I believe you successfully licensed 360 approximately grows. This year, I believe you're at roughly 250. And I think you have another 50 or 100 applications in process. I know there's a lot of finger pointing about why you don't have more licenses, but ultimately, the messaging needs to get out, that this is what we're trying to achieve. And really, I think there's been some real serious mixed messages in the past. I addressed, at their request, certain board members about the title of their program last year. Spoke to them at length for about two hours about the commercial cannabis license that you were issuing during a medical-only period. Last year, the message was, reported in the local newspaper, that we far, Humboldt-Treney County far exceeds Humboldt County in licensing and success. Yet, even though Humboldt County is being sued at this time for the EIR, they find themselves with well over 1,000 licensees, they are embracing law enforcement, and they are promoting more licensing. So messaging is key. Another key is the process. If you don't stick to your process, if you don't support those that engage your process or enforce your process, then you will find your program a failure. Key of that is the CEQA document. Key of that is the conditional use permit. You don't have a grading ordinance. All of these things are going to trigger significant issues with CEQA. Lastly, I mentioned embracing law enforcement. I don't even want to get into the litany of issues locally with law enforcement. I've been subject to demonizing locally. My team has, local law enforcement. But if you don't embrace law enforcement, your program, your enrollment numbers, your licensing will continue to dwindle. January 1st, the state license will go permanent, you will be required to have CEQA. Your program, your CEQA program or document won't be completed until July of 2019. Please, I encourage you to totally embrace the CEQA process. Thank you.
No further public comment?
Marie Peterson, Hayfork. As we all know, we do need to have a bulletproof CEQA document. The major concern that I've had throughout this process is a lack of transparency from the board and the county. Even right now, the crest of proposals was never discussed publicly, was never made available to the public here. We do not have any access to the information about the other applicants or the proposed budgets for those applicants, or that the applicants gave. This lack of transparency has left a diverse community of stakeholders feeling very fatigued in the ability to have valid input in a successful process that is protective of the environment, the farming community, and the larger community. At this point, I feel strongly that we need to have a Treney County Cannabis Advisory Committee, a collaborative group that includes all the organizations and agencies and other stakeholders from the community, and gives them a voice, without which I don't think CEQA will adequately, the CEQA document will not be able to adequately address our concerns. And also, Ascent, or whatever consulting firm is chosen to do this work, will not have access to super important information that the community already has. We have a really strong partnership of local and regional organizations and people who've worked really hard together for years, looking at these problems. For example, in 2014, many of you may not know, there's already been impact studies looking at water use in the community, looking at water mapping cannabis farms, looking at the water use from those cannabis farms by watershed, by HEP-12 watersheds. We did a three-year Fisheries Restoration Grant Program study that looked at stream temperature, stream flow data. There's massive amounts of data available at our fingertips. We have Kelly Sheen, who's worked on the county's data for decades. I don't know how long he's been there, but he knows the county in a way that nobody else does. We have people that really, really care about these issues for lots of different reasons, but overall, we all want our county to be healthy. We want to have a successful program, generally. We've been waiting for the last year, since the first document came out that was grossly inadequate. There were about five references that could have been used in footnotes, and not a whole lot of information in there, definitely wouldn't stand up in court. Now we've been waiting for a year for something to happen. There's a timeline that was given on page four of 27, which we are already a month behind on. And using that timeline, assuming that we have a contract.
I'll give you another minute.
Okay. Assuming that we have the contracted work started within two days of now, and not accounting for holidays or missed deadlines, we would likely have a certified document on June 4th. Which is, I mean, that's also a big concern of mine, that this is like a very short amount of time, a lot of data that we need, and we really have to get this right, which means a lot of upfront input from all the different stakeholders now. We need transparency, and we need the community to have a voice, we need law enforcement to have a voice, we need all the different groups. And I think it's also really important to make sure that the firm that's selected will address very specific impacts, accounting for the cumulative impacts of 15 one-acre plots and another 515 up to 10,000 square feet areas. But then we also have that extra 100% cultivation area for the immature plants that needs to be taken into consideration. So I just, I think that we really need to invest a lot of time upfront, even if it's long, a couple big, long meetings, whatever, we need to invest the time upfront to make sure that this is successful, because we all want it to be successful.
Anybody else? Good afternoon, board. Justin Hawkins, Hayfork. I appreciate you guys finally bringing this forward. It does seem a little bit overdue, honestly. And I've looked at the timeline on there, too, and I don't know if it's possible to make this work, especially in EIR. I mean, timeline doesn't seem to fit. I'm not an expert in the field, of course, but. If we don't bring everybody in, in some sort of stakeholder advisory group now, it won't work. I can already, you see what happens in Humboldt with lawsuits. We've got people in the room tonight, that today, that, you know, should have a voice also. I agree, law enforcement should have a voice. And they're in the legislation, and right now, we're not seeing LSAs approved. And if you don't have one of those approved, it's hard to get a state license. And we're coming up on the end of the deadlines for renewals of the temporary licensing. So, it's pretty serious, and I feel like there's a lot of people who want to be involved. So please take our advice and allow the input of everybody in the process in the beginning. I think it's already passed due. Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Morris, you have a question?
I have a couple of questions and comments from a couple of the speakers. Certainly, there's been a lot of different work and studies done in the area, so I'm hoping the organization will reach out to our community members on the studies that have been done on a lot of these topics. And of course, a grading ordinance is not lost on us. I know it's on your place, I wanted to make sure Lieutenant Little knew that it's not lost on us, that the grading ordinance is on our checklist. Lastly, I just want to make sure that, again, the addendum process is really important. So if I can, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Who is Ascent?
Thank you.
It is, it is, is a environmental firm, has experience with writing environmental documents specifically for some of the cannabis and cannabis program. Was any other company contacted? Was this put out to this? This was, this is very broad process that, when we put it out, it's very public. We put it out for a week, it was five weeks, and we advertise it in a few spaces, and it's available for anybody to pull and read the proposal, which was included with this. And then what we do is, you have a deadline date where they have to submit a proposal. We had four proposals that were submitted, and they were based on the evaluation as outlined and I saw earlier. So they were chosen out of 14? Yes. Page eight of 27, there's a selection process and criteria that we went through. And these, we have very extensive notes and stuff. But also, if mine is repetitive process, will we? No, I'm totally okay. I just want to get to the more important questions. Were they not given the due dates that this was due by? They were given the due dates. So why am I? Put a fire in the middle, and probably be the best, be the most candid ballot. So we're behind in our giving them documentation, or is there behind in doing their job? Because I don't know where Ascent actually is located, or are they in Redding, or where they at?
Sacramento.
Sacramento. Okay. So how did the fire affect them? Well, it affected them, it affected staff. Okay. That's what I'm saying. So it's our inability to give them the documentation that's needed to stay on par here, to make this happen correctly in a timely fashion? Because the reason, what I'm getting at here is, we have a lot of money in a cannabis budget, and we're not getting things accomplished in an efficient or a timely manner. These are very serious states that we have. Mr. Lieutenant Littlehair came in here, and he actually said something that caught me totally off guard. He knew more about the numbers of where our county's going in our cannabis program than I do. He's talked about turnovers, and he's talking to those numbers, where he's really discussing is turnover and a complete failure of our program. And when he's comparing us to Humboldt, and I like to think Humboldt's the one failing, I don't like it when he comes in here and actually pulls out numbers and explains to me that really the people that started this, that all went into this with me in the beginning, are all dropping out, are over this, and all you're giving is a repetitive turnaround of a bunch of other people that are just hiding in this, and they're really not going to be in this. That's the truth. Okay? He knows it, I know it, and that's the reality. So what we're trying to do here is get an efficient program together, done in a timely fashion, so we can actually get the real people that are trying to get in this and do it and make it.
Mr. Mines, what we're trying to do here specifically, and I.
Well, that's why I'm asking questions.
I get your long term, but this is to bring, the question at hand today is to bring on an environmental assessment firm to get our CEQA in order.
So it's to bring the same firm to continue it, and I'm wondering if they're going to be able to add the dates, because we're getting into dates here now, and should we be maybe bringing in some more help? They're not under contract yet, I have to point out. They have no involvement with the county until we are actually under contract. So right now, we don't have anybody doing this?
That's what this is for.
Johnny, come wait, did you fix it?
Oh, it's just about the date. I'm just more concerned about these dates, because we actually came here today. And the reason we came here today was because of the date that everybody thought we had come here, because there was some sort of other license that had to be today, some self-transporter, or dates, or some nates, and everybody seemed to do it. But I think there's some probably pretty important dates. We should probably really write those down and start trying to make sure we hit those important dates on really important items, and not get sidetracked, and like self-transport and things that aren't really the most, I mean, they're important, but I don't see how dates are made.
Again, Mr. Mines, I'm not sure where we're going. We are here today and having a meeting because we had to pass a hazardous debris plan. Mr. Tippett is trying to get some more county business done in a timely manner, and so we added this on. So I don't, I'm not aware of any other outside influence besides that. So the question is, do we have enough information to board a contract to Ascent, or is the board wishes to go back and have it rebidded, do something different, get more information for this board? And I would say that this is a timely enough matter. If that is the wish of the board, then we should get that, and then schedule another special meeting to try to get this through.
Any other questions? Yeah. So I assume, I think this is what maybe Supervisor Mines is talking about, are these July dates? Those are going to get updated when?
You know, the July dates that were in there are specific to the RFP.
Oh, you're right. So it's, it's.
It's when, what day you did the RFP back to us, what day we got.
Right. So I don't know, are those the dates you're referring to?
No, I'm listening to Mr. Little tell me. January 1st is the date. January 1st is the date, which is the day. The state, you need to have it, so all these people like Justin can then turn around and apply to the state for his permanent license. And he can't do that, it's temporary, and I do know this much about the system, because I'm involved, I have temporary licenses. They run out. You can't keep renewing them. All of a sudden, you're done. It's over.
Supervisor Mines, I will say, I just learned yesterday, that temporary license may have to get extended at the state level. We don't have confirmation, but that's a new development, so.
That's an if, though.
Right. I understand.
Solve. That's what I'm worried about. We have a July 1st, solve the date. So what we're saying is, is to all of our license holders, that there's a good chance if you don't go to your own CEQA right now and do it quickly, you're not in business as of January 1st legally in the state of California. That's kind of the way I know the system works, because I have to go and. And that's kind of the way I know the system works, because I have to go through this as it goes, because I have a business in Marin shut down based on these kind of same situations. And so I know that I have to shut down and I'm out of business. So I'm just concerned for all of the stakeholders and everyone that's put their money in, including Mr. Parker, who came up here and talked about this, understanding I have the actual enforcement officer for the state here telling me about these dates. I'm just trying to make sure that we understand what we're doing.
And we do, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, I know you're speeding it up and we're trying to get it done, I just want to make sure, just, these are dates I wasn't even aware of, but now I'm very concerned. And now I'm in a position of, you know? Go ahead.
Now we have one more question.
I was just going to ask you, sir.
Okay, I am.
I'd like to move to adopt, approve this agreement, authorizing up to two-hundred-and-nine-thousand versus completing phase one. I also want it in the motion to include for them to evaluate the addendum process of the state PDR.
Okay, this is just an agreement, so if there's some favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I pose same sign. All right, and with that, Rick, I would direct you to put in information, the next planning commission meeting is probably as good as any spot, but if you have a better plan to get this information, explain to the people, the process, how it will work when the public gets in.
And I did commit to having a workshop, so...
And time is the essence, and we are, do need to move this along as fast as possible. All right, with that, we're adjourned at twelve fifty-two.